Is being recorded.
Well, this meeting, the Gainesville City Commission to Order, this is a special meeting to discuss the proposed charter amendments to the Gainesville City Charter, a culmination of several months of work done by the Charter Review Commission. We'd like to thank all of them for their service, especially under the most recently very difficult times. And so with that, sorry, let me get back to my screen here. With that, is there a motion to adopt our agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, I think it was a Santos motion, and Commissioner Warren made the second. Any public comment on adoption of the agenda, Larry?
Yeah, that's a good question. We do have a caller, but I don't believe that the call is in reference to the agenda. I'll double check, but I think that's the case. Let me see here. Might need Marie's help here for just a second to unmute the public line.
Related, you know.
Caller, I think we have Mr. Campos. I think we have Mr. I think we have Mr. Campos. Standby for one second. I think we have Mr. Campos on the line. Just wanted to make sure that you weren't calling in to comment on the agenda itself, that you were calling for a specific item.
It was a more, it's not a specific item on the agenda, but about issues that we spoke about as a commission.
Ah, okay. Oh, this is, this is a member of the Charter Review Commission, Mayor George Campos. Forgive me. Would you like to take his comment now, or would you rather wait?
No, let's get our agenda adopted, and then Inspector Campos, if you, well, if you want to just wait around for the first round of public comment on the first item, not the adoption of the minutes, but the first actual discussion item, we'll get you there. That sounds good.
Sure.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, with that, we'll move to a roll call vote, adoption of the agenda.
Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward?
Aye.
Commissioner Ariola?
Aye.
Commissioner Hey Santos?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Poe?
All right, that motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Our next item is the approval of the minutes from the April 30 Charter Review Commission meeting.
Okay, were there any questions, additions, deletions, or is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Okay, is there a second? Commissioner Johnson was the second on that. Hey Santos made the motion. Madam Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm not certain these are the meeting minutes for the Charter Review Commission, so I'm not sure that you all need to adopt them.
Yeah, I was wondering about that, but then I also realized that they're probably not meeting again, and so they might be caught in the netherworld there. Ms. Gany, was there a particular reason that they got put on our agenda?
Yes, I think it's always been our practice that whenever a board typically sunsets, we ask the commission to at least accept the final meeting minutes so that they finalize. However, if you don't see that.
That's fine. That's fine. No harm, no foul, and abundance of caution. We will accept their minutes. Okay, so again, they've been moved for approval by Commissioner Santos, seconded by Commissioner Johnson. Any members of the public wish to speak to adoption of the minutes from the last CRC meeting? Larry, I'm assuming that's nobody to talk to the minutes?
Correct, Mayor.
Okay, move to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Hey Santos?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward?
Aye.
Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ariola?
Aye.
And Mayor Poe?
All right, that motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Our next item is 191051, Proposed Charter Amendment to Retitle the Clerk of the Commission to City Clerk, with the recommendation that the commission consider the proposed charter amendment and one veto it by affirmative vote of five members of the commission, or direct the city attorney to advertise and place the draft ordinance on the June 4 regular city commission meeting for first reading.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions about this, or does anybody have anything they'd like to share about this particular item, renaming clerk of the commission to city clerk?
Well, Mr. Mayor, this was actually at my request, just to kind of align the role with industry standards for naming of the role. There really is no other impetus outside of just making it a cleaner, cleaner title moving forward. And the only way to do that is, of course, by amending the charter.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move we direct the city attorney to advertise and place the draft ordinance on June 4 regular city commission meeting for first reading.
Okay, thank you. And that was seconded by Commissioner Warren. Commissioner Warren, did you have any comments as well, or you just were on for a motion? Okay, I couldn't hear you there, but it sounds like you were on for a motion. That's fine. You don't have to unmute if you don't have anything to say. Okay, thank you. Okay, Larry, any members of the public wish to speak to this motion or this item?
Well, Mayor, we do have, as I mentioned, Charter Review Commissioner Campos, who's on the line. If you'd like to take him at this time, you may, or you can hold off. He is, he is standing by.
Yeah, this is as good a time as any, because I think he's speaking more to the whole process and everything else, which this was a part of. So let's go ahead and do that, so he doesn't have to stay on for the, on the line for the whole meeting. I'm sure Inspector Campos will be watching with rapt, virtually.
Inspector, you should be live. Please go ahead.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I don't want to be out of procedure, but I think my comments are more of what we voted down than what we're voting up. Obviously, I approved or voted for the changing of the clerk, but this was in part of the process of discussing all of the different charters and listening to several commissioners and the difficulty in managing all the charters and taking a look at how that can potentially be addressed in the changing of a charter. And to put quite candidly, I don't think in the end we had enough information, enough independent information, to make a decision along those lines. I think this warrants a more in-depth study with folks that have much more experience in these areas than us commissioners. I mean, we did have some guest speakers that had some of that experience and did give some of their opinions of how some things should be run. And I think the overall goal of all of the commissioners on the CRC was to make sure that our government is working as efficiently as possible by leveraging all of its assets to obtain its ultimate goals of succeeding, growing, and getting bigger. And we, at least I specifically, have heard information from multiple sources about how that's not occurring because the city is pretty much divided into two entities, one being general government, the other one being GRU. And there are, there have been efforts in the past for the two to work together, but there always seems to be this huge divide. And I just, I think we, to make a huge decision like that, more information and/or research is needed to make that recommendation. I think that's what we were lacking as a commission, to make that kind of a decision. There were a couple of other issues, too, that were voted down, again, at the last minute, because we didn't have enough information, or we had issues related to our current situation with COVID that made a lot of the commissioners uneasy about moving forward with some of those decisions. So maybe there's, I would recommend that the commission not keep those, you know, not just, this is going to sound wrong, but push it aside, but maybe enact some type of action to get a study done, put a focus group together to have a longstanding research and look into this area, so we have an informed decision that can be made at the end, and further help you out in leading the city further with its success.
All right, thank you very much, Inspector Campos, for sharing those thoughts with this. It really is appreciated. And, you know, I think it really highlights, excuse me, I came unplugged here. It highlights the, you know, real difficulty of doing this under the circumstances. You know, the Charter Review Commission met for a very long time and had a lot of public engagement along the way. But really, the whole point of this was it would sort of build up and culminate and get the most public participation and input towards the end, when the commission had whittled down all of the various ideas and proposals to the ones that seemed to have the most merit, and then, you know, have a really good public debate about those, you know, presumably at this meeting, or at the CRC's last meeting or two, or probably both. And that just hasn't been able to happen, and that's unfortunate, because I think there were, there are some good discussions to still be had out there over several that didn't make the cut. And I don't, I don't, in history, we're taught not to practice a factual history. We know what happened and we know what didn't happen, but we don't know what could have happened. And, you know, and that, I think that the comments that Inspector Campus made reflect that, that real difficulty of this coming to us when, when things are sort of shut down. So I appreciate that. Larry, was there anybody else on the line for this item?
Oh, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Well, there is a motion on the floor to move forward with the attorney drafting the ballot language for this to go on the final ballot before the voters. So with that, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward?
Aye.
Commissioner Ariola?
Aye.
Commissioner Santos?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Poe?
All right, that motion passes unanimously. Next item, please.
The next item is 191115, Proposed Charter Amendment to Eliminate the Restriction on Use of Public and Private Funds for Construction of Paved Surfaces in Designated Areas, with the recommendation that the commission consider the proposed charter amendment and one veto it by affirmative action, excuse me, by affirmative vote of five members of the commission, or two, direct the city attorney to advertise and place the draft ordinance on the June 4 regular city commission meeting for first reading.
Okay, very good. Are there any questions, or is there a motion? Commissioner Ariola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank the CRC for bringing this particular one up. I think that this is definitely something that we should go and give our approval with, so I'd like to go ahead and move that we approve this recommendation.
Okay, and it's seconded by Commissioner Ward, so the motion by Commissioner Ariola, seconded by Ward, to ask the attorney to draft the language and get this moving forward to the ballot for the voters. Larry, are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this item?
No, sir, there aren't.
Okay, very good. I agree. I'm excited about this prospect of passing. It actually will free up our city to do some really good work if it passes. So I'm happy this one made the cut. With that, roll call vote.
Commissioner Ariola?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward?
Aye.
Commissioner Hey Santos?
Aye.
And Mayor Poe?
Aye, that motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Our next item is 191120, Proposed Charter Amendment to Further Limit the Authority of the City Commission to Dispose of Certain Utility Systems, and the recommendation is the same.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions, or is there a motion? Commissioner Warren?
Question, yeah. There have been a lot of discussion about items related to this that have been going on, and if the charter, somebody with the Charter Review Commission could explain what this will, how it will, the effect of what this will have, and why it was important to do it.
Okay, thank you. We do have the chairperson of the Charter Review Commission with us tonight, so she's as good a person I need to explain what the commission was thinking when they advanced this to us. And so, Madam Chair, welcome.
Am I unmuted?
No, you're not.
Am I?
No, you're fine. We hear you loud and clear.
Oh, okay. Again, there were, I just want to preface this by saying, you know, for me being on the commission was certainly an honor, but, you know, I kind of came, I'm not old school Gainesville, I'm new school Gainesville, so I didn't have a lot of the, some of the historical perspectives, like the issues of Hogtown Creek. And in some ways, it was kind of hard, but in other ways, it was good, because I was kind of more objective, I think, in my, my thought processes on certain things, because I didn't really have the history or the politics of a lot of these things. But, and this was one of them. But if, this was one of Ms. Commissioner Susan Botcher's issues, and basically, we just felt that the wording was, wasn't, that it needed additional verbiage to protect, because they have more than just, you know, GRU elector, you know, so there was, we wanted to cover all the bases of the utility that GRU covers, basically.
Okay, yeah, I just hope for the public listening in to be able to give them some of the background, too, the discussion that had gone on and the decision that was made, so.
And it was specific to further protect the utility itself. So we couldn't dispose, you know, you just couldn't just come up and sell certain pieces or parts. So we just wanted to add additional language to cover everything that GRU does.
Maybe I could ask if Madam Attorney could provide some clarification as to why this is also important within our charter. I know we did discuss some of these things about the disposal of utilities when we were going through a proposal with an item that was on the ballot, maybe a year and a half ago, but it, to me, it was kind of related to that, and it just provides clarification in the wording and position in the Charter, in the charter's document.
Okay, Ms. Shelley, and you had your hand up before anyway, so whatever it is you'd like to share with us.
Yes, I have my hand up, because thanks to some careful reading by Commissioner Hey Santos, who called me earlier, when we bring this forward for first reading of an ordinance, we're going to add a little language, because he was correct. As it's currently written, it says, "Without the prior approval of a majority of the qualified electors of the city," that would be at the election at which the question is being considered. In other words, whoever shows up for the election, it would be a majority of those voting, not the majority of the entire electors of the city. So we'll make that clean up when we bring the ordinance forward for first reading.
That's a great point.
All right, good catch, Commissioner Santos. Anything else?
That didn't answer my question, though, Nicole, as far as why changing this is important for the protection of GRU as a utility because of the many services that it provides. There was something previously in the wording that wasn't equal in the designation of the wastewater gas and telecommunications, and it put them, all the different services that we provide, pretty much under and at the same designation, I guess, of services within GRU. I'm not getting the legal standing, but that's what you're here for.
Well, the effect of this proposed amendment is to take authority away from the city commission and vest it with the electors, as to three additional systems. Right now, the commission can't dispose of the electric or water system in a way that materially reduces its capacity. And going forward, if this is approved by the voters, then you also could not dispose of the natural gas system, the wastewater system, or the telecommunications system without a vote of the electors.
Okay, that's great. That was a clarification I was trying to bring out, rather than, you know, so many times we have an item that's been in a lot of discussion, but when we bring it forward here for public awareness, it's good to share information about why we're dealing with that, instead of just voting in support or not. I'm ready to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So most of everything has been answered, but essentially, what folks should understand is that right now, today, the city commission, any sitting city commission, could dispose of, for instance, the natural gas system, that, the utility that we run through, GRU, without taking it to voters. That's a bad idea, in my opinion. I, I think if we were to be able to dispose of any of the utilities that are currently part of GRU, electric, water, natural gas, wastewater, or telecommunications, those, any of those should require the approval of the voters, in my opinion. This gives us the opportunity to do that. Right now, natural gas, wastewater, or telecom, the city commission could both put those up for sale, you know, starting at the next meeting. That's not a good practice. We should, we should require that the community weigh in on that, if that were to be the case. So that's what this tries to accomplish. And I certainly will, will do my part to get the word out on this if we move ahead and place one. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Seeing no further, hands up, we'll turn to Larry for any public comment on this motion?
None at this time, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we'll move back to the commission for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Hey Santos?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward?
Aye.
Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ariola?
Aye.
And Mayor Poe?
All right, that motion passes unanimously. On to the next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item is 191121, Proposed Charter Amendment to Create a Charter Preamble, with the recommendation, of course, that the city commission approve the proposed charter amendment, and one veto it by affirmative vote of five members of the commission, or two, direct the city attorney to advertise and place the draft ordinance on the June 4 regular city commission meeting for first reading.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Ward, is that a new hand or an old hand? I have your hand up. Old hand, okay, thank you. No judgment. Is that a, is that a fresh hand, or it's stale? Commissioner Warren? You're unmuted, Commissioner Warren?
I'd like to make the motion to go ahead and adopt the proposed charter amendment 191121, and direct the city attorney to advertise and place the draft ordinance on the June 4 regular city commission meeting for first reading.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Santos, moved by Commissioner Warren. Any of the commissioners have any questions or comments about this item? Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Chair, I'm not entirely clear on what we're trying to accomplish with this. Can you give me some insight on what your thought processes were?
Um, yes, we follow the National Civic League's Model City Charter, and one of the recommendations in there is that every charter, it would be nice to have a preamble. And it's just, it's, and I actually was the one that kind of wrote it, cobbled it together based on things that were in there. We had one commissioner that wanted some more equity language in there, and we thought this was the best way to kind of cover what we want to be, you know, as a city, if it's not, you know, any type of policy or law or anything like that. It's just, it was just trying to be more descriptive of how we, as neighbors and community builders in the city, view our city, and, and to just activate the charter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Larry, members of the public, have any comments on this particular item?
No, sir.
Okay, with that, we will move to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward?
Aye.
Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Ariola?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hey Santos?
Aye, sorry.
It's okay. And Mayor Poe?
All right, that motion passes unanimously. This, these were the only charter, proposed charter amendments that made it to the final cut from the Charter Review Commission. I think some of us probably have some other thoughts on where we go from here. And so with that, I'll recognize Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question for Attorney Shelley. So we are, I think we just have one more reading to go until it's approved at the Office of, Office of Equal, Office of Equity and Inclusion. And in the charter, the title is Director of Office of Equal Opportunity. Can you walk me through the legalities of that, and if we would need to, it would be, need to be a charter amendment to change that title to the Director of the Office of Equity and Inclusion?
Ms. Shelley?
Thank you, Mayor. The charter actually calls the position the Equal Opportunity Director. It doesn't refer to the name of the office. So I think in speaking with Ms. Marshall, we didn't believe that a title change to the charter office would necessarily be required. Of course, the commission could move that forward if you chose to.
Okay, so if she were to be the Director of the Office of Equity and Inclusion, because that's what the name of the office is, then it's, it's fine for the language to remain the same in the charter, is what you're saying?
Because the charter doesn't discuss the office, what the name of the office is, it only gives the title of the charter officer being the Equal Opportunity Director. Of course, if you want to rename the director, then yes, it would require a charter amendment.
Okay. So that's something that's up for discussion. I mean, I think that it goes, that's, it's in alignment with the, the new office name. I think if it stays the same, it has the potential for it to be confusing to people. So, you know, I'd love to hear some of your thoughts about that.
Do you conclude, Commissioner?
Yep.
Okay, thank you for sharing that with us. Commissioner Ariola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was for another subject. I wanted to ask you a procedural question. So the agenda doesn't have anything as far as giving direction to, necessary direction to charter officers, but I did want to ask the commission if we could schedule a discussion on some research that I asked our policy director to look into regarding governments, and I wanted to know if you thought this was the appropriate time.
It's not, because this is a special meeting, which is very limited in scope. That's why there's not, you know, other, other items on here. But is there a time sensitivity to the, to what you're trying to do?
Not necessarily.
So, okay.
I would like the discussion to happen sooner than later.
Sure, and I think there's lots of things many of us would like to get into a more open discussion about. But in fairness to the public, you know, I think we're trying to hold those things off until we can have an actual in-person public meeting. But if that research is done, what I would recommend is that that be shared with all the members of the commission, and put it up available online for members of the public, so that they can start looking it over. That way, we can start digesting the findings of that, and hopefully get us closer to being able to have a public discussion about, about it when, when we're ready. And, you know, I don't want to be too predictive here, but the clerk has shared with me that we will be required to go back to in-person meetings when we move into Phase 2 of the reopening per governor's order, and, which means that they're going to revoke the ability to hold virtual meetings. And I just get the sense that's going to happen sooner rather than later, whether we want it to or not. So I think as much as you can, you know, ask the policy director to share that information with us, so we can start reading, and then we'll, we'll try to get this thing scheduled as quickly as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So then, I will go ahead and ask our research director to do that. The research is.
that. The research is completed. It's in the OneDrive under Strong Foundations. The research is titled Strong Research. Thank you.
Okay, good. So, Madam Clerk, if you could just push that out to each of us, just share that particular link to us in an email, that would be helpful. Thank you very much. So, I, you know, I do believe the commission needs to roll back around and have some discussions, or at least a discussion about the items that did not make the cut, and include in that discussion the item that Commissioner Johnson brought up. And I, this is not a good time to do it. I think we need to have a preliminary discussion and find out why certain things didn't move forward, and what the, you know, was it just because there wasn't enough information on which to base a sound recommendation to the commission? Or was there just overwhelming opposition because such strong arguments were made? And so, you know, as a commission, we obviously still can propose charter amendments, and members of the public can also propose charter amendments through a petition process. I don't want to do it in the midst of this. And if we're going to get into some really important discussions, such as, you know, doing away with a charter officer, or doing something about term limits, or commissioner compensation, those are big discussions that we need to make sure that the public, you know, is able to really fully engage with us. And I'm not saying that we're going to do anything different than the Charter Review Commission, but as I said in my statement earlier, I really felt like all of this was supposed to build up to this very well-publicized and well-covered debate about the merits of these things. And right as we were getting to that, right as we're getting to the finish line, whammo, the marathon got called off, and said, everybody, go home. And so, you know, I think it is important, maybe late summer, early fall, when people feel a little safer coming out and attending a public meeting and engaging in a dialogue, we talk about some of these things and see whether there's still the appetite to consider some other amendments, as simple as renaming a charter office to much more complex issues ahead. And I'm just, you know, I think it's important to reserve our right to have that discussion down the road. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I totally agree that now is the time to roll out new ideas, probably, because the public generally isn't aware that we have this process right now. I also would say, though, that, you know, if we wait much longer at all, the opportunity to actually pass anything that goes on the November ballot will go away. Things aren't going to pass just because they exist on the ballot. They pass because there's a group that will coalesce or not coalesce, and in which case I think things won't pass, to let people know what it is. Just the appearance on the ballot is rarely enough to get something done. So, I believe that the Charter Review Commission process was the right process, and I'm glad that it's part of our charter. But I think that's the opportunity to get things on the ballot. You know, for us as a commission, to talk about adding something in, you know, at the very last second, I think kind of dooms it to failure, whatever it is, no matter how good an idea it might be. So, I think that the, I think that anything we were going to put on the ballot needed to go through the Charter Review Commission process. And I've said many times that I was committed to whatever they put forward. I was going to support, and I will continue to support, these things that they brought forward, because that was the community's opportunity to bring things up that they thought should change in the charter. So, that's just my thoughts on it. I mean, procedurally and logistically, it would be really hard, I think, for anything to appear in the public consciousness and get on the November ballot, and actually have a hope to be passed. So, just my two cents.
Yeah, I agree. My assumption was it would not be this November that we would do these things. It would be at a later election, probably 2022. Commissioner Areola?
I hear you loud and clear, Commissioner Ward. Totally agree, as far as, you know, you have to allow these things to permeate into the public discussion. But we also don't need to hold ourselves to any artificial deadlines this year, two years from now. The reason why I like what the mayor is saying about having these follow-up discussions is because I think as a commission, we are uniquely situated. You look at the experience that we've amassed over the last few years, there are some conversations that I think should happen at the commission level. I think we've had, a number of us have had the governing experience, and especially, you know, not, I say this out of love, but, you know, the mayor's experience is extremely valuable in these conversations. And I think we'd be missing a huge opportunity for our community to have large public discussions with so much valuable governing experience, which, you know, as we know, and as you know, Commissioner, doesn't always happen at this level.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. So, if, so what I'm hearing is that if we, is that this is one of the last discussions that we're going to have to be able to then put something on the ballot? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, we're running up against a deadline, a timeline issue here, and we can ask Michelle to talk about that timeline a little bit if we want. But, but yeah, that's how all these things were scheduled, to meet a certain deadline, to get the ballot language advertised and all that.
So, if we, so if we don't have a discussion about changing the charter to, from Equal Opportunity Director to Equity and Inclusion Director, does that mean that the next opportunity is going to come in a decade?
I would say the latest that conversation can come up in a decade. The city commission still reserves the right to place charter amendments to, for a vote. And that process can also happen through citizen petition. So, you know, this Charter Review Commission is a third way, and our newest way, to propose amendments. But no, we wouldn't have to wait a decade. The commission could choose to have that discussion, and if there is a supermajority of commissioners that believe that that is something we should do, then we can put it on a ballot for the voters ourselves.
Okay.
And that's what I'm talking about with some of these other topics, reserving the right to do that, if it makes sense.
So, I'm just going to say, I feel like it's incredibly simple. I mean, we've been having this discussion. I feel like it's been permeating within Gainesville for a while, because we've been talking about the Office of Equity and Inclusion. So, to me, it would just seem some, simple to me to add this on right now, rather than, you know, have another discussion about it.
Yeah. So, I agree with you, Commissioner. And so, let's do this, because some of the others are, these are, you know, when we're talking about term limits and pay, and some other, you know, getting rid of a charter officer, that, those are big discussions. You know, so let's place this, Madam Clerk, if you'll take note here, let's place this on our agenda for our next meeting, because I agree, it does line up pretty easily with what the clerk's office is doing. And I don't think it's real controversial. And it's also something, I, the chair can speak up to this, if I'm misrepresenting what the committee talked about, or the commission talked about. But I don't think that this is something that was part of their discussion process. I think all of this renaming happened kind of parallel to their work and separate from their work. And so, it's not as if we're going against something that they debated and chose not to do, rather, it's a new suggestion. So, Madam Clerk, if you'll place that on our, on our agenda for next week for discussion. And we have, we have agenda review for that meeting on Wednesday. Is that fine, without objection from anybody? Okay, very good. Madam Chair?
Just a, you know, a couple closing comments. You know, I would say that in, before this whole COVID-19 thing came up, you know, we had meetings every month for almost a year, a year this May. And the public participation was very, very limited. One or two people, three, a couple of speakers. I personally was a little disappointed, because I thought, you know, I mean, we had over 50 people apply to be on the charter commission. So, you would have thought, you know, they had ideas or things that they thought should change, and they'd show up at the meetings, and it just didn't happen. And I don't know, you know, again, I mean, sometimes it's hard to get the word out to the public, or people work. But even, you know, when we did have our few Zoom meetings, we had just, you know, very minimal callers. And we, even our comments on eComment or emails were like, you know, handful. And so, you know, I think it's important that the public, you know, has input on how they think their city government should be run. But it just did not happen. And I do agree with Inspector Campos that this whole COVID-19 thing really challenged and changed many of the members' ideas, because what we thought was so important, you know, like may versus shall, I just couldn't get behind some of it sometimes, because it was just like, this doesn't really matter right now. And while some of the bigger items did, again, while many of the members, and I understood this as well, felt like this isn't going to go on forever. They won't meet again for 10 years. But I think you bring up a very good point, Mayor, that you can put it on there, citizens can put something on there. And something like Commissioner Johnson said, I can tell you, I know my commission wouldn't have a problem with it's just changing a title to bring everything more current. Again, like with the utility issue, the old language just did not cover everything that we currently have when they created that language however many decades ago. And one of the things I was going to address and get together, or have the members input on, there were a lot of things that we talked about, but we kind of took the position that if the commission, the mayor and the commission can accomplish the same thing as an ordinance, it didn't belong in the charter. So, for example, we were talking, there were some issues about defining residency. And we had, we have a kind of a running list to do a white paper on, of, one thing was ranked vote, ranked choice voting. So, there were several things along the way, but we felt that the commission could have that opportunity to address that through ordinances down the road. So, I didn't want to hit you with a, you know, a white paper on that. Again, right now, we're dealing with so many things. I think that maybe somewhere down the road, we can maybe circle back, or I can circle back, and, or I can even work on it, and maybe, you know, I know you have so many other things to focus on right now, that these things should come back, and should come back for further discussion. But again, COVID-19's done a number on this, so. But I will say again, we all appreciated being on this board, and everybody worked really hard, and, you know, listened to each other and came from different perspectives. So, again, thank you for the opportunity. And obviously, if you have any more questions, you can feel free to reach out to me individually. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for your service and your leadership on the CRC. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, that's what I wanted to say, too, is thank you for your leadership. Thank you to everybody that was on CRC. I mean, it was really, I think we got an exceptional group of people to think through some of these issues. And I know that it just took a lot of time, a lot of energy. So, I really appreciate every single person that took the time to do this, because I know that you all spent a year, hours at a time. I only got a chance to tune into the Zoom meetings, and I'm happy, you know, I got a chance to at least do that. But your leadership was exceptional, Mayor Hildreth, and all the people that were on the commission. Thank you for taking the time and entering to really think through a lot of these issues. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hay Santos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also want to thank all the members of the CRC. You guys put a lot of work in. I really do appreciate your service to our city. Thank you.
Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, broken record, but yeah, I would concur. I appreciate everyone on the Charter Review Commission and the effort they put into this. It was a lot of effort. There was a lot for them to wade through. They brought in experts from outside. They spent many, many hours reading, not only the proposals, but the intent of the proposals, and doing lots of outside reading to be prepared for it. And you did tremendous work. And it was a tremendous group of people. I mean, we had former elected officials. We had people who had been activists in the community for many years. It was diverse. It was, there were people from lots of different schools of thought were part of it. I was really, really pleased with the group that we were able to make part of that commission. And we were choosing from a pretty broad group of folks. We had more than 50 applications, as I recall, for those positions. So, thank you to everyone who was involved, and thank you to everyone who applied. I hope that many people who applied were able to participate in watching the process unfold, and to were able to give comment, I hope, as well. It was really a kind of a model Charter Review Commission. I think it's a horrible shame that it got cut the way it did by the pandemic, and forced into Zoom, because I think if it had been live, it would have been just amazing to watch. Really grateful for people, and I thank you for doing it. You did the first round of Gainesville, City of Gainesville Charter Review Commission. Very proud. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, thanks to everybody, and especially to the staff that helped support this. I mean, this was just, poor charter officers get reminded too often that their contract reads, or other duties as directed by the commission. And this is one of those. And so, beyond everything else that our staff is asked to do, they supported this Charter Review Commission, I think in every way that was asked of them. I don't think that there was any ever a time where people were not able to get the resources that they needed. So, thank you. Daniel Nie, Nicole Shally, the clerk staff, everybody that really helped support this. You really helped the commission do their job well. Okay, well, with that, just to kind of recap, we, the city commission voted unanimously to advance all four proposed charter amendments to the attorney for drafting of the language and eventual forwarding to the November ballot for our Gainesville residents to vote on, up or down. And we also agreed to have a discussion about renaming the Office of Equal Opportunity to the Office of Diversity and Inclusion at our next city commission meeting. And we will approve that agenda tomorrow, Wednesday, at the agenda review. Thank you all for joining us. Larry, I'm assuming nobody else is on the phone? Just double check.
Correct, sir.
Okay, very good. Well, with that, this meeting is adjourned. All of you have a safe and good evening.